Will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem.
Shall we pray? Spirit of the living God, the God of all of us, red in yellow, black and white, Jewish and Christian and Muslim, the God who breathed God's own breath into every single one of us, come by here. You have anointed these people to lead your people. And if we were to have a conversation with Moses, Moses would say, "It's not easy to lead people. Did you can please some of them some of the time, did most of the time you please few?" And yet, they're called to do this thing called leading. So come by here, God. Give them your strength even as you give them your spirit and even as you give them the breath that they take even at this moment, so that as they work, they can do it with the strength and renewed energy that comes from holding on to you and believing in you when everything else seems to make no sense at all. Come by here, God, and I ask it in the name of the God of us all. Amen.
Greg Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So move.
Clerk call the roll.
Greg Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Craig.
Thank you, President Ginther. On September the 19th was the National POW MIA Recognition Day for 2014. If we could just observe a moment of silence. Thank you. These are the words of President Barack Obama, who led the ceremony in Washington. And I quote, "As our armed forces defends our homeland from the threats in a changing world, we remain committed to a profound obligation that dates back to the earliest days of our founding. The United States does not ever leave Army and Women in uniform behind. On National POW MIA Recognition Day, we express the solemn promise of a country and its people to our service members who have not returned home and their families. You are not forgotten." Thank you very much. The next announcement is we're pleased and certainly honored to announce that Cornelius Otis and Mark Harrison will be representing the Paralympics United States Basia team at the World Championship in Beijing, China. Cornelius and Mark left Thursday, September the 18th, 2014. The competition begins Monday, September the 22nd, 2014. Team USA is ranked 14th in the world. U.S. was ranked 26th in the world two short years ago. This team in this short time has put the U.S. Paralympics Basia team in great position to qualify for the 2016 Rio de Janeiro Paralympic Games. We wish these gentlemen great success, as well as Team USA Basia. Go Team USA! 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 Certainly, Director, any comments? This is a wonderful, certainly a proud moment for the city of Columbus and our nation.
Chairman Craig, President Ginther, members of council, these two individuals have been participating with our therapeutic recreation program for a number of years, and we're just very excited that they've had the opportunity to go over to China to represent Team USA plus Columbus, Ohio, and hopefully they'll come back with a win or a ranking at least that gets them to Rio de Janeiro in two years. So as soon as they get back, we'll let you know how they did. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Director. And then finally, I had the privilege of being with folks on the South Side. Let's move Columbus. On Sunday, they had a wonderful, powerful health initiative. A number of families and children came out. They had a lot of healthy fruits and vegetables for families, and that is all that I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Klein? President Pro Tem Miller?
Yes, President Ginther, I do have a short presentation. I would like to ask Michael Marlowe to come forward from MM Consulting. He's going to give a brief summary of the study he conducted related to a downtown accelerator, but it's great news from his report and his study and what he's going to present tonight, something that might be called the Columbus Innovation District. Mr. Marlowe?
Thank you. Councilwoman Miller? Apparently, to turn it on. So, thank you, City Council, for the ability to work on this project. It's, we, I was asked to answer the question of what the city should or should not do within innovation, and myself along with my team have come back with some real data that the community can use to participate in the business growth of Columbus. The nature of our work was really centered on interviews with key stakeholders in the community that we've, we divided into four segments: entrepreneurs, investors, economic development leadership, and entrepreneur enablers. And the nature of the work is really an interview where the people you see on the screen were interviewed by myself and at least one other person, in most cases, three people, and asked certain questions on what we can do as a community to help their business or help them grow, and at the same time, what Columbus can do to participate in their growth. And at the end of this process, we collaborated, our notes together, and sent them to each interviewee and gave them the ability to edit what we heard. That process, and then, excuse me, and then the interviewees were able to send it back to us with their edits and additional information. So the data that we had to work with on this journey was as pure as we could make it. And really, the interviewees, their words themselves, and our work is really based on that. One of the questions we asked was always based on metrics, that if the city would participate in an innovation district or an innovation district in general, what examples externally should we look at? And at the same time, what metrics inside really matter to the growth of their businesses? And this list here is our seven different cities that we looked at and mapped out four of them, the four highest vote-getters by the interviewees: Pittsburgh, Austin, Cincinnati, and Kansas City, and then we organically added Cleveland, Indianapolis, and Miami. So with all this data we collected, we formulated some strong alignment on some key points for the city itself. And the biggest one that was, the city should focus on or be a positive, was the ability for the city to be an enabler, that, to listen to the business community and be in a position to enable growth on a larger scale. And for the inverse of that, really, to stay away from creating businesses or being an investor. So those are the, kind of the two bigger points. This, this house was, is what we created, is our strategic architecture for how this downtown innovation district could look. And the big vision is to create a center of gravity where entrepreneurs and investors are drawn to, to formulate their new ideas and their next business ventures. The big part of this mission, to execute this vision, is really around what we call gazelle businesses or high-growth businesses, businesses with, that generate the higher-paying jobs, businesses that promote more serial entrepreneurship. By that, we mean entrepreneurs that aren't doing it more than just once, that they're, this is kind of a life's work, they do it repeatedly. And the goals to track this mission is really around those folks, experienced entrepreneurs, folks that have experienced positive exits and have been able to grow high-quality jobs. The strategy for this to be successful is centered on a couple of key elements where the city could really participate, and one being in real estate. And that's where a lot of the conversations we had, excuse me, with how the physical site should look came up, and we saw a very strong alignment on a district versus a single location. So more of a neighborhood, cultural feel, and that's something where it's a two-to-six block radius, where the city could participate by helping with lease structures. That's been a big impediment for the growth businesses in Columbus, is that they look for one- to two-year leases with flexibility, and what's available is basically five-year leases. And as well, looking for locations that kind of fit a growth culture. So with that physical element, there's also desire to have services. And by services, that's really a portal-type service. So what's been created organically in the community is something called About Our Work, which is a virtual portal. And the city has a small business concierge position, which has been recently active. We see the merger of those two things in a central, physical place in this innovation district where investors and entrepreneurs can proactively go and ask to be connected to professional services or just things that they will need. The fact that business is constantly changing and the markets are always changing on what's needed when, the city's involvement in being a listener and having, not in the sense of picking which vendor to use, but making the search for services easier. There's some real compelling evidence that the city could participate in that way. And finally, on organizational governance, we find the big key here is finding, getting certain anchor institutions to be involved and be involved long-term, and all of which supported by our culture. So our next steps, what we recommend for this to really take shape, is to convene and charter a working group, which we've articulated here. We have three individuals that we've interviewed as part of our research: Tom Walker at Tech Columbus, Michael Bills at OSU, Nick Davis at Rocket Space in Loomis here in town, who all have experience with creating new ventures, with leading different organizations, and have all expressed an interest in participating in the discussion on what this could look like. And beneath that first line, there's Steve Shoney's office, looking into which physical locations make the most sense. We believe his office needs to be involved at that level. And going down the list of different items that are necessary for this to work, such as parking, such as availability of heavy infrastructure where the city could really take a proactive role, the different groups that need to be involved are the working group we have identified, the city's Economic Development Office, and we would like to see Columbus 2020 participate through their create pillar. We see their leadership around this to be also very important.
Thank you for this information. In the beginning, as I met throughout the small business community and even the tech community, for these past couple of years, everyone's been talking about, you know, having a, which may be a possibility of a downtown incubator space and center. But through this study, from what Marlowe Consulting has produced, is that the culture of Columbus is the possibility of not just having a center, but actually an innovation district where I believe that individuals across central Ohio can focus in on, where they can actually work, sleep, and play in one area of town and bring the innovation to where certain companies around town would love to send their own employees to a certain spot where they can actually invest in that smaller company to get their ideals out. So this is one of the things, and I'm very proud to say that this study is allowing us for Columbus to not just looking in a synergy of a down, just a downtown space, but actually in a district where actually I believe that we can have and recruit talent across the nation by them coming to a district like this. And this is something that I believe that's going to be just a beginning. Like, this document is something that I believe that we as a city could hand off to the private community for such a district. So thank you for all your work, and we will, he will leave a copy with me, and we will distribute that to the other council members for that. So thank you, Mr. Marlowe.
Thank you very much.
And that's all I have. President Ginther.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. Councilmember Mills?
Yes, I have one recognition. I'm going to ask Mr. Stephen Kron to come down. If I haven't, did I say that right? I apologize if I've mispronounced your name. I met Mr. Kron at the National Night Out Celebration at Old Sawmill Park and had the chance to talk to him and many of his neighbors. And just the passion and the desire and the energy and the care for their community and their neighborhood just struck me in such a way. I asked him to come down and share a little bit of their story related to the Old Sawmill Park area, and their comments about the work and how engaged and why and how inclusive the process has been, also came with compliments to the city Columbus Recreation and Parks Department for all of their support. And it's great to hear when we can partner with communities, and in this particular group, there is both public, the neighborhood, community, local businesses, and our Parks and Rec. And it's just a great coming together and a good sign of when we all come together, what can happen, and certainly to the benefit of our children, I think, is just a story to be told. So without further ado, if you could share a little bit about the impressive process and what's to come.
Thank you, President Ginther, fellow council members and citizens. Thank you for having us here today. We're happy to come discuss this with you. Before we begin, I would like to thank Councilwoman Mills for the invitation to come speak and share the work we've been doing in conjunction with Parks and the city to engage the community, improve our neighborhood, and rebuild a landmark playground that's been a community asset for 22 years. My name is Kevin Cowan, and I along with Stephen Kron represent the group of community members dedicated to rebuilding the Discovery Playground in the Old Sawmill Neighborhood in Northwest Columbus. The history of the playground goes back to 1991, when a couple of mothers were playing with their children at an Upper Arlington Park and decided that they wanted to do a similar thing on the northwest side and bring something like that to Old Sawmill. That ended up in a significant fundraising effort, and children from five schools were asked to give input into the design, which ultimately would include a castle, pirate ship, and other nautical, medieval, and fantasy themes. One of the things that always kind of touches me, as we go back through the archives of the park, was one little girl's comment that she wanted to be able to climb over a rainbow and slide down the other side. And as you look through the brochures that we've given you, that was one of the things that the original playground was able to do. They ended up raising just over $70,000 with that, and thousands more materials, tools, and experience donation. The park was built with the assistance of over 1,200 people over a four-day weekend. 1,200 volunteers took part in constructing, painting, there were babysitting crews and shifts, and over 3,000 meals were served during that time. In honor of the 500th anniversary of Christopher Columbus's voyage to America, to the New World, the playground was named Discovery Playground and officially opened on May 31st, 1992. It's a little over, a little under a year's effort to do. Since then, the Discovery Playground has provided a positive focal point for the community, engaging tens of thousands of children and bringing thousands of families together. On a personal note, my wife and I bought our home in Old Sawmill in 1999 and started a family shortly thereafter. When word came from the city that the playground was going to be demolished and rebuilt, we reflected on what the playground meant to our children and their experiences being raised with it in our neighborhood. We knew that we owed the next generation of Old Sawmill Community Families the same positive experience. Luckily, other community members felt the same debt of gratitude, and the volunteers, and a volunteer new Discovery Playground Committee was formed to carry it forward. Stephen Kron here was part of, was one of our key members of it, so I'd like to take the opportunity to allow him to share some of the efforts about how we were able to undertake this effort.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Councilwoman Mills, for allowing us to come today. It's an honor to be here. I've been a resident of the city of Columbus for 24 years, and as an active member of the LDS Church, our church is always talking about getting involved in the community. And I've always looking for opportunities to do that, and as my children grew and I played at the Discovery Playground that's right across from Kevin's home, I thought that would make a really cool Eagle Scout project, to be able to help get it going, but it was an enormous thing. And eventually, we were, I went there and I found that it just wasn't in good enough repair, it had to be taken down. We were, we were told by some friends that it was going to just be taken down and nothing was going to be put in its place. And as Kevin said, this is a centerpiece of our community, and so rumor with its thousand tongues is normally wrong. And so I picked up the phone, like many of our citizens probably don't do, and contacted the Department of Recreation and Parks, and was put in touch with a person, a wonderful employee of yours, Jeff Anderson, and he's been instrumental in providing us with assistance. He let me know about the Old Sawmill Civic Association, and I had, I had donuts with a fellow who's the president, and that was how it all started back about a year ago. And then I, after talking with him, I spoke to the people at the Old Sawmill Elementary School, just right in front of the playground. They have a LEAP class for advanced children, and I knew the teacher there from when my son was there as a student. And so we started meeting with those kids to say, "What do you want?" We didn't want to just put together a playground of adults. The city had a plan, Jeff shared that with us. We took it to the kids, and it was so fun to see their reactions. "Does it have to be that color?" It just didn't look like it was any fun. And there were some things that were like little lily pad climbing things, and one kid said, "We don't want any of that lily pad climbing, we want a fireman's pole. That's what we want." So I thought, "Well, we'll see what we can do." Went back to talk to Jeff and the people that were constructing the playground, and they changed the color, and they got this kid a fireman's pole, and they made other changes in the design that the city had put together. I thought that was fabulous, city and the kids and the community working together. Well, we started having monthly meetings. We met at the Northwest Library, we had six meetings, and invited the whole community. Sometimes we'd have 40 people there, and one time Kevin and his family came, and that was it. I didn't know where this was really going, I just thought it was a good idea, I felt inspired to continue to carry forward. And you know, it got to a point where I said, "We need a Facebook page." And one woman said, "I can do that." "We need someone who's got the ability to put together a website. Kevin said, 'I know how to do that.'" "We need to be able to take donations via PayPal. We got someone to do that." We got the LEAP class involved, we got the city involved, we got the community involved, and it's just been a fabulous experience for us. We also needed fundraising, and that's some of the hardest things to do, as you probably are aware of as politicians, and we had one woman that said, "I'd be glad to do that." And I thought, "Bless you, that's great." And she did a wonderful job. Well, the people that were doing the playground for the city are called Game Time, that's the playground company, and so I went to the Old Sawmill Elementary School LEAP class, and imagine, I showed them this catalog and saw them all salivate over all these things that they could put in their playground, and I said to them, "This is going to be your playground, so you pick what you want to put in the playground." Now, the city had plans to put together a decked playground, and Kevin, perhaps you could show the plan, this was this one initially. The part that's in the middle is, actually this part, is the deck playground the city was going to put in along with some swings. As Kevin pointed out, this Discovery Playground is fabulous. I mean, a castle playground, kids came from all over the place to see it, and this was nice, it was better than nothing, but it still wasn't what we had visualized in this marvelous Discovery Playground. So I started asking people if they'd like to contribute. We put together a donations form, which I've given you all copies of, I don't expect any donations, I just wanted you to show you what we'd done as far as how that worked. The kids then took this catalog and they went through it and they picked out 30 different things that they thought would be really neat to put in their playground. And I said, "Well, we'll try to raise money. If we can raise $5,000, maybe we can put one extra thing in the playground, or forget 10, maybe we can put two in there." And so they pulled together a list of 30 of their favorite playground elements and four of their favorite color schemes, none of which was the one that the city initially proposed, and none of which had anything close to the Michigan colors, that was very much against what they wanted, it was, that was fun to see. And then we had a vote. These kids, these fourth and fifth graders, conducted a vote at Old Sawmill Elementary School for the color on the playground as well as the elements. And we also, because the neighborhood includes an awful lot of the Worthington School District, we had the kids from Granby Elementary School also vote on the same things. We combined their votes, and we came up with the color scheme, the winning color scheme, and the winning top items. And we said, "Okay, now we've got to start raising money." And so we put together the contribution form, started making some calls, came up with the idea of selling bricks for $125 with people's names in them, because there's a brick-paver patio that's there at the playground. We had community gatherings at Coaches, a restaurant, where we raised over $1,000, people came and turned in money, and we also had a fundraiser at Menchies. We reached out to some of the larger companies. Kroger gave us $10,000. Marzetti, a company here in town, gave us $4,000. And many individuals, including Kevin and I, gave $1,000 to be able to promote this neat additional element of the playground. So far, we've raised $51,000. And just a couple of weeks ago, right when school was about to start, they started constructing our playground. We were able to buy these 11 playground elements that the kids liked the most, including this fabulous Space World merry-go-round thing. And so this is what it's, we don't have a picture here for you of what it actually looks like, but this is the schematic, and it was constructed while the kids were salivating looking out the window at the, at the playground as it was being produced. And we made a donation last week of this beautiful playground to the city of Columbus for you to take good care of. That doesn't mean we're washing our hands of this, because there's still more to be done. This is our community, and so we have more money than what we spent for this. We actually didn't have enough money initially, but we needed to make the payment, so we took out a loan of $10,000, but we got enough contributions to be able to pay that off really quickly and raise some more money. We hope to be able to continue to work with the city, with Director McKnight and Jeff Anderson and the folks there, to be able to put in benches, tables, nice garbage cans, and maybe some more playground equipment for the kids, all to donate back to the city of Columbus. What I've learned from this experience, first of all, it's been wonderful to work with the community. I've met good friends like the Cowans and others who've just been, it's been wonderful to be able to interact with them. In our society, we seem to be ones that come home and we press that garage door opener and we go inside and we don't interact with and we go inside, and we don't interact with one another. This playground is going to allow the kids and their parents to be able to gather in a public place and have a great time. I've also learned, this is really important, and something I wanted to make sure I told Councilmember Mills, is the city is, at first I thought, well, the city's our friend. They're helping us out. They're being very good about this whole thing. After a while, I realized the city is us. The fact is that we elect you as our leaders, and then you hire people like the director of the Recreation and Parks and Jeff Anderson and other people. And when we say, we'd like to do something, you guys say, how can we help you? Too often, it's us-them type of thing. We pay taxes and get nothing back. Well, we get an awful lot back from being in the City of Columbus, and I love living in the City of Columbus, and I'm so grateful for what you do every day in serving us and what we are able to do when we work with you. And through this experience, I plan on doing this many more times in the future, this park and who knows where else. We've enjoyed very much working together on this good project with the schools, with the city, with the businesses, with the residents. It's been a fabulous experience. And once again, I thank you for letting us talk to you today. Kevin has some final comments.
I would, I echo Stephen's comments about our work with the city. Definitely very refreshing, my first experience, really engaging with anybody in the city, and I would say I walked away more than impressed. I would like to let you know of a couple of things that are going on and certainly extend an invitation to anybody who wants to come out. We are doing an unveiling of the playground on September 30. We're going to do one at the elementary school at 2:30 in the afternoon. We're going to do a community picnic and community outing at 6 o'clock the same day, the 30th. If anybody wants to come out, our contact information is on the packet there. Certainly, we can make some time for you on the agenda if you want to maybe say a couple of words there. We've got about 1,100 homes in the community. We've got a few thousand within a very short walking distance, and the playground gets used by children from all neighborhoods, mostly due to the schools. So if you'd like to come out, please get in contact with one of us. I'd also like to extend an invitation, if you see a similar situation to this again, where somebody is wanting to figure out how to get started on this stuff, certainly have them reach out to one of the two of us. We'll be happy to help out. Thank you.
Thank you all. Really, really appreciate it, and thanks for sharing a story. It's a great story, coming together and working together, and really want to thank Jeff and also Director McKnight and what could make the best experience in working the partnership of schools and everybody together. So thank you all for what you're doing. Appreciate you. Thank you for coming down. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Councilmember Paley?
Yes, President Ginther, I would like to invite Patrick Warnebeck, the executive director of the Columbus Gay Men's Chorus, and the other guests from the chorus to the podium to accept Resolution 0154X, 2014, to honor and recognize the 25th anniversary of the Columbus Gay Men's Chorus. First, I'll move for adoption.
Greg Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
The Columbus Gay Men's Chorus was formed in 1990 and maintains the vision of its founding members to foster increased recognition, understanding, and acceptance of gay men, lesbians, bisexual, and transgender persons. The Columbus Gay Men's Chorus is a non-auditioned chorus open to all people regardless of vocal talent, musical abilities, race, gender, religion, age, physical ability, sexual orientation, sexual identity, or economic means. The members of the chorus are equally dedicated to performing vocal music of the highest quality for its audience and to maintaining the atmosphere of camaraderie, support, and respect for its diverse members. As a performing arts group, the Columbus Gay Men's Chorus strives to enrich and to entertain its diverse audience through varied concerts and other performances comprised of a range of vocal, musical, theatrical, and dance presentations. The Columbus Gay Men's Chorus creates innovative, entertaining, and provocative performances that enhance the contribution of the arts in the Columbus and Central Ohio communities and that honor, preserve, and expand the artistry of the all-male chorus. Currently, the chorus has more than 120 active singing members and more than 50 volunteers that assist with the performances and day-to-day operations. I personally have been to a couple of your performances, and I must say, it's quite entertaining. A lot more entertaining than I was expecting, so I encourage people to come out and see your performance. Mr. Warnebeck, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther, Councilmember Paley, council members. I want to thank you for the proclamation, and it's more than 25 years celebrating us. It's celebrating the community that has accepted us, supported us, and really have been open to us for the past 25 years. We're excited about our season. We have several special projects that we're doing. One actually kicked off in June of this year, a partnership with the Columbus Historical Society. We have an exhibit at the Columbus Historical Society at COSI, looking back at our 25 years, and that runs through October. We also partnered with the Columbus Metropolitan Library, and we were the first non-historical society organization to actually have our own page on the memory project. So they're digitizing all of our archives for us, hopefully to encourage other smaller nonprofit organizations who do not have the resources themselves to digitize their archives and to secure their past, encourage them to meet with Angelo O'Neil at the Metropolitan Library, who has been amazing, and get them involved and really to be able to categorize all the history of Columbus, not just the Columbus Gay Men's Chorus. So hopefully, that will encourage other organizations to do that. We're also creating a 25th anniversary DVD, which is looking back at the past 25 years, but also thinking about the next 25 years and what are we going to do to have an impact on Central Ohio and Columbus. And on this Friday, we're actually kicking off our 25th anniversary season, thanks to initially Councilmember Klein and Gretchen for leading me the right way. We have three street signs on Gay Street, at Gay and High, Gay and Third, Gay and Fourth, commemorating our 25th anniversary, and we're having a kickoff celebration this Friday. And as we finish all of our speaking, the Capitol Pride Marching Band is going to lead us down the Gay Street sidewalk in a parade to do amici for reception, so everyone is invited to that. So it should be different having a band walking down Gay Street as opposed to everyone else going to dinner on Gay Street. So we're very excited. We're looking forward to our next 25 years. We have a great lineup of concerts, and one that we're especially proud of is we're actually partnering for the first time with the Capitol Pride Band, adding a fifth concert, sixth concert to our season this October at the Capitol Theater at the Rice Center. So we're excited about that, hoping that that will become an increasing partnership with them, sharing our resources and sharing our patrons and our musical talents. So again, thank you very much, and we're looking forward to working with the council and everyone in the City of Columbus who have been so open and so supportive the past 25 years.
Do you want to introduce your guests?
I surely will. This is Tom Reeves, who is the Vice President of the Columbus Gay Men's Chorus Board. Warren McPherson, one of the, not first year, right?
No.
Okay. Neil Coriel, singer. Mitch Mathias, who is from the first concert, correct? Yes. And then Dr. Timothy Sarsony, our spectacular artistic director.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Councilmember Paley, for this resolution. I just want to say congratulations, Patrick, and to the Gay Men's Chorus for their 25th anniversary. Certainly, I know that you're always looking for ways to build your audience, and I know you've done a great deal of work in terms of audience expansion. I just want to congratulate you. I know a couple of years ago, you received the PNC Arts Alive Award and had a concert with the Columbus Children's Chorus, and I think that was really key, because I think it's great to be able to bring diverse groups together, to be able to introduce the different art venues to different groups of people. So congratulations on your 25th anniversary, and you do put on an exciting concert. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Council President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, thank you. I have a resolution this evening, but first, before I read the resolution, I want to introduce the newest person to work with me in terms of team Tyson at council. It's Nicole Harper. Nicole, if you'll stand. Nicole was the previous legislative director for the Public Children's Association of Ohio, and prior to that, she was a legislative aide to state centers Miller and Tavora. So we're so excited that she has joined our team. So congratulations. And now I have Resolution Number 0160X, Test 2014. And as I read it, I'm going to ask Dr. Frederick Louise Almada, Yolanda Zapata, Elena Costello, Randy Lopez, and Elena Foolus to walk towards the podium. And it is to recognize September as the Hispanic Heritage Month and honor the Latin American Space for Enrichment and Research at the Ohio State University for their work to build an inclusive community. And whereas the roots of Hispanic Heritage Month began in 1968, when President Johnson established a week to recognize the contributions of the Hispanic Americans to our community, and whereas soon after it was decided it's to celebrate this entire month and each year with a given theme. Whereas this year's theme is Hispanics, a legacy of history, a present of action, and a future of success. It's certainly embodying the work of the Latin American Space for the Enrichment Research, known as LASER, located within the Department of Diversity and Inclusion at the Ohio State University. Whereas in the direction of Dr. Frederick Louise Aldemaya, LASER came to life to build a space that encourages students to move beyond their circumstances. And whereas LASER is a groundbreaking initiative that creates a network of mentorship between graduate students and Latino undergraduates, as well as between OSU undergraduates and Latino high school students from the Columbus area. And whereas LASER prepares our growing population of Latino students for successful entry into college and then graduate in professional schools, as well as actively building bridges with the Columbus community. And whereas in addition to LASER, LASER also hosts creative and scholarly events that explore the social, cultural, and historical realities facing Latinos as residing in the United States. And whereas students that participate in this initiative not only learn the importance of education and civic duty, but also the need for culturally inclusive workforce capable of competing in the global economy. And whereas according to the U.S. Census, Latinos represent 17% of the population and will be 20% of the college-age population by 2020, making the work of LASER critically important, now therefore be it resolved by this council of the City of Columbus, that this council is hereby recognize September as the Hispanic Heritage Month and honor LASER for expanding opportunities for students and professionals in our community. I move for passage.
Greg Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And now the podium is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther, and council members for recognizing LASER. Just briefly, we, several years ago, living here in Columbus, we recognized just around the corner how different our classrooms were looking, from elementary school all the way through high school. And we knew that, at least with our resources, we could make a difference, starting with ninth graders. And since then, we are now in over 20 different high schools in the Columbus area. We are working with over 80 LASER high school scholars, Latinos, and we train constantly on a rotating basis undergraduates to work with those. And we wanted this to be an academically rigorous mentoring program whereby undergraduates, one undergraduate would work with a maximum of two high school students once a week, meeting to work on curricular weaknesses to turn those into strengths, and depending on where they were in high school, start working on ACT, SAT prep, essay writing prep, to get them ready. I am very proud to say that this year, we've started to see the results of that labor, and in fact, we've had many LASER high school students, 12th graders, getting into places like OSU, Columbus State, and other universities in the area, including Ohio Wesleyan and Otterbyne and others. We've also created a networking system, because of course, we have wonderful resources in the City of Columbus for internships during the summer for these students, both high school and undergraduate students. So we've been able to create a network for basically catching students that we saw when we visited high schools, thinking that in fact, call centers and factories and mowing lawns were the only future for them. We've made a significant difference. With that, I'd like to hand it over to my program coordinator, Elena, so she can mention a few words as well.
I'm very lucky for the work I do, and so thank you for recognizing LASER, and I appreciate that. My mother's always asked, what did your students, what did your children study in college? And she says, I don't know. I think it was writing, because they wrote a lot. And that's the way it is for our parents, our LASER scholars. They're first generation. There's a language and a cultural barrier, and we get to work with them on that and have parent meetings and discuss things that the rest of us may take for granted, like knowing how to apply or where to apply, or the universities, where they exist. And so it's been great to see that growth, and now we have a waitlist. And I also, if you want to take any LASER undergrads in, to bring them into city council and intern, I'd love that, too. Thank you.
I, too, would also like to echo my gratitude for the audience that we have today, and also, or especially the recognition that Latinos have on the agenda. We started at Ohio State, reaching out in partnership with the Gates Millennium Scholars Program. We did an outreach program that was targeting Latinos. And the first year that we conducted the program, there were about 40 students and parents in a crowd of about 500, and this was a program that was specifically for them. I'm very happy to say that through the work of LASER over the years, the reaching out to the schools and especially to the parents, on Saturday, we were able to bring more than 300 students and their parents. There is a great hunger. Now that we've opened the door, we have gotten a tremendous response. So there's a wonderful talent pool out there. The parents are very eager for an education for their children, and we appreciate your support in our work with that group.
Well, again, thank you for coming down, and certainly, a special thank you to Dr. Aldama, because he was the founding director of this program. I just want to say thank you for your insight and your leadership in ensuring that everyone in Columbus and all these students have an opportunity to be able to get a great education and move forward in their lives. So thank you so very, very much. Councilmember Paley?
I want to congratulate LASER for everything that they do for our community, but I also want to mention and thank our Community Relations Commission, and especially Napoleon Bell, Abdi Galgure, and Guadalupe Velezquez for a wonderful celebration within the city for Hispanic Heritage Month and an awesome event at the community, at the college for all of our immigrants. So they did an absolutely fabulous job on Friday and throughout the weekend, and I believe we have celebrations going on for the entire month. So thank you for your contributions to the community, and also thank you to our Columbus Community Relations Team for everything that they've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any comments from our elected officials, city auditor, city attorney?
Mr. President, members of council, I just want to remind everybody that about 10:59 tonight, the autumn equinox will occur, which means the sun is directly over the equator, and the length of the day and the night will be the same. So summer is over and fall is starting.
Thank you, counselor. Judge Barrows, anything from the courts?
Through any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda, seeing none, may we have a motion? from the consent action portion of the agenda, seeing none, may we have a motion to waive reading of the title's 30-day legislation by the city clerk. So, is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee, ordinance 1751, and ordinance 1975-2014. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 2068-2014. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 2034-2014. Public Safety Judiciary Committee, ordinance 2012-2014. Public Utilities Committee, ordinances 1863, 1916, 1938, 1947, 1949, and 2009-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 2062 and 2084-2014. Development Committee, ordinance 2058-2014. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinance 2029-2014. Zoning Committee, ordinances 2100 and 2101-2014.
Thank you. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 155X and 157X, 159X-2014. Finance Committee, ordinances 1986, 2022, 2076, and 2103-2014. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinances 2028, 2070, 2069-2014. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee, ordinances 1882, 2044, 2092-2014. Public Utilities Committee, ordinances 1839, 1844, 1945, and 1999-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 1942, 2019, 2020, 2021, 2043, 2089, 2091, and 2110-2014. Technology Committee, ordinances 2056 and 2072-2014. Development Committee, ordinances 2027, 2083, 2085, 2087, 2120, and 2121-2014. Environment Committee, 2061-2014, 2067, 2088, and 2118-2014.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions. Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes, with the exception of 2028-2014, 1839-2014, 1844-2014, on which I am abstaining.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter?
Yes, consent agenda carries. We now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in the emergency legislation. First committee is the Health and Human Services Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Tom Haran to start walking towards the podium, and then I'm going to, because the two pieces of legislation in Health and Human Services are with, are two pieces from the Columbus Neighborhood Health Centers. But before I read that legislation, I just want to share that the Columbus Neighborhood Health Center received an outstanding review in the most recent site visit conducted by the Health Resources and Services Administration, known as HERSA. And based on those 19 categories that are assessed in the site visit, the Columbus Neighborhood Health Centers excelled in every category, receiving a 19 out of 19. HERSA recently conducts, conducted health center visits to ensure program compliance, review clinical and financial performance, and to identify the best practices established by the health centers. HERSA will also be recognizing three CNHC best practices as part of their final report for CNHC. I wanted to share that. Of the, so, based upon this rating, we are one of the top three thoroughly qualified health centers in the country. So, I want to thank Tom for his leadership. Tom was also, from Business First, the 2014 Healthcare Hero of the Year. So, I just, it's so important that, to recognize, we have a wonderful leadership in our community. And so, with that, I'm going to read, Tom, before I read the legislation, I know the first piece is for $200,000 for the John Maloney Center, and I would like for you to address that. And then, the second is for WIC, and we have the three WIC clinics within your facilities. If you could just talk about those briefly.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, President Ginter, members of council. Pleased to be here tonight, and for your consideration of the legislation to continue to support CNHC. This is important legislation that will allow us to continue to grow and develop the John Maloney South Side Health Center, newly opened last year. And I thought it would be particularly important to talk about the funding that we'll be receiving tonight, because it will allow us to bring obstetric services to the Maloney Health Center during the fourth quarter of the year. And I know, President Ginter, with your leadership on the issue of infant mortality, you fully understand the significance of, and the importance of bringing prenatal care services to the South Side, and this legislation will allow us to begin to provide those services during the fourth quarter of the year, and expand those services going into next year as part of our programming for the South Side Health Center. It also allows us to work with the Help Me Grow program, and the WIC legislation will allow us to provide nutrition services at the health center. And so, it is a significant effort towards impacting that issue of infant mortality on the South Side, and allows us, as we continue to do in all of our health centers, to continue to provide services to women and children throughout the system. So, that's pretty much an overview of what we can accomplish through those, through that legislation that you're considering this evening.
Thank you, Tom, and again, congratulations on that major accomplishment. And so, with that, ordinance number 1571-2014 is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to modify and increase the contract with Columbus Neighborhood Health Center, Inc., to authorize the expenditure of $200,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund, and to declare an emergency. I move for passage. I don't know, a person need to move to take from the table?
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And now, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1894-2014, is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Columbus Neighborhood Health Center for shared occupancy expenses at three WIC program offices, to authorize expenditure of $31,000 from the Health Department's grants fund, and to declare an emergency. And those locations are West Side, John Maloney, and East Central. And I move for passage. No, please, I'm going to take from the table. And now, I move for pass.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
And now, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, I'd like to move to workforce development. Thank you. I'm going to ask Suzanne Coleman Tobert to walk towards the podium, please. And this ordinance is ordinance 1910, it's 2014, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to modify a contract with the Central Ohio Workforce Investment Corporation, known as COWIC, to extend support of the South Side outreach and recruitment services of COWIC, workforce development services, and to declare an emergency. And first of all, I just want to say, congratulations. I know it's Workforce Development Month, and Suzanne Coleman Tobert, the podium is yours.
Thank you very much, President Ginter, Councilmember Tyson, other members of council. I first would like to introduce to you Joe Youngs, who is our newest Director of Business Solutions, and I just wanted her to come tonight. This is her first time here, down at city council, so I wanted to give her a taste. I want to just express my gratitude to all of the council members for all of the years of support that you have given to COWIC, now called Ohio Means Jobs Columbus Franklin County. And thank you also for recognizing all the men and women who work so tirelessly, doing workforce development and helping employers to find qualified employees, and trying to get people back to work. We recognize that here in the city of Columbus, we have a very low unemployment rate, but we also recognize that there are many neighborhoods and populations of people who still experience double-digit unemployment. And I wanted to let you know that with these additional dollars, we will continue the work that we've been doing over the years. The past year, we served over 12,000 individuals. We were able to place over 1,500 individuals into jobs with an average wage of $16 an hour, which is almost $35,000. It's much better than minimum wage, and we're very proud of that, but we still have a lot of work to do. The dollars within this particular piece of legislation will help us to continue the work that we're doing in the southern gateway. And I really wanted Joe to spend just a few minutes talking to you about some of the things that have been going on, on the South Side. And so, with your indulgence, I'm going to ask Joe to talk about that.
Just to speak a little bit about our challenges, when we first started working with the residents directly, I will say that we've been working with employers for a while on the South Side, as we do with employers, you know, throughout the county. But we hadn't really reached out, attempted to reach out to the residents. And as we started to do that, we realized there was a challenge, because we hadn't, we just didn't know where to go to get those numbers of folks and to touch them. So, we decided to identify an anchor organization on the South Side, which was Community for All People. And that allowed us to really reach residents where they went for help. We realized that there were a lot of challenges for a large number of South Side residents. As some of you may know, unemployment is in the double digits on the South Side. So, we started realizing that some of the folks weren't even really ready to go to work yet. So, we realized we had to partner with organizations to work with residents holistically. So, we had a number of events in the community. First of all, information sessions, just letting folks know that we were there in the community to help them, to ultimately gain self-sustaining employment, so that they could take care of their families. But we also let them realize that we were there to help them address some of their challenges. So, we decided, rather than to start with just having jobs exposed initially, we would have information sessions where we would have some of those organizations to sit down and talk with them, talk about their challenges, and how they may be able to help. We want to ensure that whenever someone comes to COWIC or to one of our events, that everyone walks away with something. They may not walk away with what they thought they were going to walk away with, but they did walk away with something of value. So, our momentum, we've been picking up our momentum. It started a little slow, but we've picked up our momentum. It's even to the point now that when we talk to residents, they'll tell us, hey, Tyrone told us about you, told us to come over to 1111 East Broad Street, because you were over at Church for All People. You helped him get training. You helped him to get ready for a position at Children's Hospital as a patient escort. You know, as a result, he got a customer service certification, and he's doing great there. So, we're really excited about this opportunity, and, you know, we know that we've made some great strides, but we have a long ways to go. But with how things have been going so far for us, I'm sure we'll come back with lots even more good news for you. Thank you.
Well, I think placing almost 200 people and jobs on the South Side is something to celebrate, and they're making very good wages. We're excited about being one of the occupants at REB when it opens up, and we're currently working with Columbus Castings. There are lots of good things that are going on in our city, around workforce, Restoration Academy, the graduation of 22 individuals, 22 out of 25 on October the 10th, is something we should all be proud of. All 22 participants will have permanent jobs. A second cohort will graduate in December, and we will have met our 50 participant goal. We started out with 15, if you remember. The SOAR Hire Summer Program was a huge success. We thank you for the dollars that you put towards that program and continue to support in so many ways that aren't just monetary, but your support to these young people are priceless. Having those young people come and work in your offices as interns, you change many of their lives. So, there are many things that I think that all of us can be proud of. Since the Great Recession, we've come a long way. We've put a lot of people back to work. We have not done this by ourselves. We've done this through your support, through the support of the county, and certainly, our collaborative partners in the community. And I just want you to know, again, how grateful, grateful we are for the support that you have given us. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you, Ms. Youngs, Joe, for coming down. It's your first time, and I'm sure we'll see you more often. And thank you, Suzanne, for the fine work that you're doing, and ensuring that, giving people the skill sets to be able to get those jobs and move forward, and taking care of their families. So, thank you so much for the work you guys do each and every day. And 16,000 hours is impressive, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, from that, I first move to take from the table.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
And now, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight, in the Recreation and Parks Committee, we have ordinance 1944-2014, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contracts with 30 community agencies to provide social and nutrition services to older adults in central Ohio during 2015, to authorize the expenditure of $6,725,000 from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. First, I'd move to take it from the table and request a voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Osteen.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
And if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage and request a voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Osteen.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2042-2014, to repeal ordinance 1548-2014, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with Rentals Farm Equipment, Inc., for the purchase of Lake Tech 4520 turn mowers, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Chapter 329 of City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $173,000 from the existing auditor certificate 036628, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will replace 1548-2014. Ordinance 1548-2014 had incorrect equipment, model number, and bid waiver information, and should be repealed and replaced with this new ordinance. Equipment information and bid waiver attachment has been updated and made a part of this revised ordinance. Director McKnight, comments?
Chairman Craig, President Ginter, members of council, again, in July, you approved an ordinance to purchase Laers Tech 3300 model number mower. The model number was incorrect. The size of the mower was incorrect. It's actually a little bit larger. The dollar amount has not changed. Again, this is equipment that's, we've tested, and there's only one supplier in the state of Ohio that can provide that. And we still believe this is the right equipment for us to be able to better maintain our facilities. So, we certainly appreciate your consideration of this ordinance this evening.
Thank you very much, Director McKnight. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. That's all that I have tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. First, in public safety and judiciary is 1792-2014, to authorize the appropriation of $105,000 and direct the administrative and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into a contract with BIS Digital, Inc., to authorize the expenditure of up to $103,791. to $103,791.50 with BIS Digital for installation of courtroom audio/video recording systems to waive competitive bidding requirements of Chapter 329 Columbus City Codes and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director, if you could shed some light on waiving competitive bidding provisions, please.
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, I think this is, this is not a, it's under Safety Committee, obviously, but Franklin County Municipal Court, so I apologize.
Fair enough, Deputy Director. I apologize.
Certainly.
Judge Burrows? From the seat or at the podium, wherever you'd like, sir.
This is a continuation. BIS has installed audio/video, digital recording systems in the judges' courtrooms. This is for installation in the magistrate's courtroom and continue that process. It relies on our money that's in the computer fund, which is limited each year by what we take in through the clerk's office. So instead of doing-
Judge, I hate to interrupt a judge, but you have to maybe talk into the mic. Or why don't you come to the podium, because I know you're intimately involved in the next piece of legislation as well.
Where'd you lose me? The court entered into a contract with BIS, Inc., last year for the installation of audio, video, digital recording systems in our judges' courtrooms. This is to expand that into our magistrate's courtrooms. And since we rely for this funding on money that's generated through collection of court fees, we didn't have enough money in that fund to do the whole thing at once. So it's been broken down into two parts. So that's, the competitive bidding is actually a continuation contract with the same vendor for similar equipment that's already been installed.
Got it. Thank you, Judge. Any questions or comments? I move for passage by voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mills?
Paley?
Tyson?
President Ginther.
And next is 1876-2014 to authorize the Franklin County Municipal Court judges, through the administrative and presiding judge, to contract with Alvis House to provide a work release program as an alternative for incarceration consistent with public safety, authorize the expenditure of up to an amount not to exceed $200,000 from the court's governmental grant fund, and to declare an emergency. Judge Burrows, if you'd like to come back up to the podium. I'd also like to invite Denise Robinson from Alvis House. Thank you for coming down to chambers, Denise. Ms. Robinson, I appreciate that. I'll let you all figure out who wants to go first.
Go ahead first. All right, thank you. Chairman Klein, President Ginther, members of council, I am pleased to speak in support of this ordinance. Since I know that most of you are acquainted with the program, I just wanted to let you know what a cost-effective and salutary program this is, and then I will be pleased to answer any questions you may have. All 15 judges make use of the work release program. We're running 89% successful completion of sentences. This is most remarkable because we're working primarily with people who have violated their probation, but who clearly value continuing their employment and their career. The work release participants in this program are 100% employed and must contribute 25% of their paychecks to help offset the cost of the program, which we refer to as subsistence. They are routinely screened for drugs, alcohol, and contraband upon their return from work. Alvis House only charges $62 per day, as opposed to $79 daily costs for jail. The program averages 215 participants annually. In addition to housing these offenders when they are not at work, Alvis House provides substance abuse and other programming which may assist in restoring these individuals. As you may know, the municipal court judges sentence individuals who are charged both under state code as well as under city code, and we receive funding from the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections for state code violations. So the following information is based only on those cases where individuals were sentenced under city code, since we keep the funding and expenditure separate for the two classes of prisoners. During the 12 months ending June 30th, 2014, the city had 85 participants. These people paid $36,919 in subsistence, or an average of $434 each. The bed-day total was 2,498. We measure that by one person for one day. So those 85 participants spent a total of 2,498 days in the work release program. Besides being a salutary program which keeps offenders employed, paying taxes, and supporting their families while paying their debt to society, this program results in a net savings to the city of Columbus. The sheriff currently charges the city $79 per day to house prisoners. At that rate, 2,498 bed days would cost the city $197,342. Alvis House charges the city $62 per day. For 2,498 bed days, that totals $154,876, an upfront savings of $42,466. In addition, as noted above, participants are required to pay subsistence, which is calculated at 25% of their gross income. This requirement generated $36,919 during the 12-month period ending on June 30th. These funds are used to stretch the dollars council has provided us even further and to serve more individuals than we would otherwise be able to. Thank you for your support of this ordinance.
President Ginther, councilmembers, I think we have exactly the same thing on our papers. So I won't bore you, but I do, I do want to thank you, Councilman Klein, for asking me to be here. But that's okay, because we got all of our data exactly right. So that's really good. But I do want to say one thing about our program, because what's really different about this program in comparison to other work release programs around the country is that we also require our clients to participate in, in community service projects, and that they have been very active. All of the clients have been placed from the municipal court have been very active with the Harmony Project, and they did things like build playgrounds. They also did a huge mural in Franklinton for the Harmony. So they are participating and giving back, and so that's one of the things that I like to impress upon it. We are doing a huge savings of dollars, and because it is public safety money, we want to be really cognizant of how we spend those dollars. But I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? We just can't be a society focused on harsh sentences for crimes and forget about rehabilitation. But we also have to be realistic and pragmatic about reentry in this program through Alvis House, strengthens families, it reduces crime, and saves taxpayer dollars. So thank you for your advocacy, Ms. Robinson, and thank you for your advocacy from the bench, Judge Burrows. I move for passage by voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson? President Ginther.
And the final piece in safety is 27, 2017-2014 to authorize and direct the city attorney to compromise and settle on behalf of the Department of Public Safety Division of Police the claim of John Edwards in the total sum of $35,000 and to declare an emergency. City Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, members of council, on March 1, 2013, as part of the Arnold Classic over at the Lifestyle Community Pavilion, there was a mixed arts, mixed martial arts program. Big crowd over there. About 10 o'clock at night during this crowd, there was a particular person who was disorderly, and he was being escorted out of the premises. The policeman escorted him out, thought he had been, he thought, the policeman thought he had been pushed from behind by a man, he later became known to him as John Edwards. So after he escorted the disorderly person out, the police officer came back to confront this person. And basically what happened then is some confusion. This person was escorted out, and he was then charged with criminal trespass, and then he was also arrested, and he was taken down with mace when he was arrested. Now, he was charged with criminal trespass and resisting arrest, but upon our prosecutors reviewing the case, we could not find there was sufficient evidence for the prosecution. In fact, we found conflicting testimony between police officers who were there. Now, this Mr. John Edwards is just from North Carolina, and it just dawned on me that this is not the George Edwards from North Carolina that most of us know. But he incurred expenses of about $1,700, and he had to come back for his trial. Now, what happens in cases like this? Mr. Edwards retained a particular law firm that frequently will send us letters when they have a client that explain cases and say, do you want to talk about this before we file a lawsuit? So as our practice is, we looked at what's been alleged, we do investigation, we talked to the Department of Public Safety, and we concluded that there was just cause for the claim that would have been made in court. Now, please understand that this, had this gone to court, and we had lost, we'd have paid the damages plus attorney's fees. So based upon our analysis of the situation, and in consultation with the Department of Public Safety, we believe that a offer of $35,000 to settle this case is appropriate and fair, and we had asked that council likewise approve this ordinance so that we can pay this settlement.
Thank you, City Attorney Pfeiffer. Any questions or comments for the city attorney? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Moving to public utilities.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if we could take a break and give Chairman Miller a few minutes, get ready for zoning at 6:30, I would appreciate it. So at this point, I'd asked for a motion to recess Regular Meeting Number 48. Clerk call the roll.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Stand in recess. We will reconvene for zoning at 6:30, and then reconvene Regular Meeting Number 48 to finish our regular agenda. Regular Meeting Number 49 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We will now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the zoning committee tonight, we have 1993-2014 to amend ordinance 1474-88 passed June 27, 1988 for property located at 1463 North Cassidy Avenue by repealing Section 3 and replacing it with new Section 3, thereby modifying the access restrictions to allow temporary access to North Cassidy Avenue. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 2005-2014 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.02, AR-12, AR-LD, and AR-1 Apartment Residential District Use 3333.055, exception for single or two-family dwelling 3333.16, fronting on a public street, and 3333.24 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 96000 Avenue to permit a rear single-unit dwelling above a detached garage, a carrier carriage house with reduced development standards on a lot developed with a single-unit dwelling in the AR-LD Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Juliette Bullock. The proposed use is a rear single-unit dwelling above a detached garage. This received a Victorian Village Commission recommendation for approval and the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first request to amend to emergency.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
2011-2014 to rezone 7351 Refugee Road, being 70.5 plus or minus acres, being located on the south side of Refugee Road, 2,000 plus or minus feet east of Motte Place Road from PUD 6 Plan Unit Development in our real districts to PUD 6 Plan Unit Development District. The applicant is Homewood Corporation. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. This received a Development Commission recommendation for approval and also the City Department recommendation for approval. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
2035-2014 to rezone 3389 East Dublin Granville Road, being .74 plus or minus acres located on the north side of East Dublin Granville Road, 200 plus or minus feet east of Westerville Road from LM Limited Manufacturing District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Newpar. The proposed use is a monopole telecommunications antenna. This received a Development Commission recommendation for approval and also the City Department recommendation for approval. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
We have 1834-2014. First, I'd like to remove this from the table.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And at this time, President Ginther, I'd like to table this indefinitely.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And last in zoning tonight is 1092-2014. First, I would like to take this from the table.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And next, I would like to amend and submit it to the clerk first.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And lastly, I'd like to table this till October 6 of 2014.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight. President Ginther.
Thank you, Chairman Miller. Nothing else come before zoning this evening? Entertain a motion to adjourn? Clerk call the roll.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. I'd entertain a motion to reconvene Regular Meeting Number 48. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Our next committee is the Public Utilities Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
One piece in public utilities, 1837-2014, I'd like to first remove from the table by voice vote.
Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
President Ginther.
And next is 2005-2014 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.02, AR-12, AR-LD, and AR-1 Apartment Residential District Use 3333.055, exception for single or two-family dwelling 3333.16, fronting on a public street, and 3333.24 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 96000 Avenue to permit a rear single-unit dwelling above a detached garage, a carrier carriage house with reduced development standards on a lot developed with a single-unit dwelling in the AR-LD Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Juliette Bullock. The proposed use is a rear single-unit dwelling above a detached garage. This received a Victorian Village Commission recommendation for approval and the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first request to amend to emergency.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage. 2011-2014 to rezone 7351 Refugee Road, being 70.5 plus or minus acres, being located on the south side of Refugee Road, 2,000 plus or minus feet east of Motte Place Road from PUD 6 Plan Unit Development in our real districts to PUD 6 Plan Unit Development District. The applicant is Homewood Corporation. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. This received a Development Commission recommendation for approval and also the City Department recommendation for approval. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
We have 1834-2014. First, I'd like to remove this from the table.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And at this time, President Ginther, I'd like to table this indefinitely.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And last in zoning tonight is 1092-2014. First, I would like to take this from the table.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And next, I would like to amend and submit it to the clerk first.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And lastly, I'd like to table this till October 6 of 2014.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight. of the Columbus City Code and to authorize the expenditure of $208,925.73 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Internal Services Fund and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director?
Chairman Miller, President Ginther, members of council.
Could you move your mic?
Yes. Thank you. This contract was actually previously bid and won by SHI, but however, due to changes to the terms of the contract, we have to, by city code, we have to waive competitive bidding.
So originally, it did go out for competitive bidding, and this is extension of that contract. It's my understanding that's normally happens within DOT in these contracts?
It's a common occurrence due to the acceptance of the terms and conditions of the provider, which are different from our terms and conditions.
Okay. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in the Technology Committee tonight. President Ginther.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in development, I have the following ordinances, beginning with ordinance 1987-2014 to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a jobs growth incentive with information control company LLC and information control company FED LEC equal to 25% of the amount of new income tax withheld on employees for a term of up to five years in consideration of investing approximately $833,000 related to the acquisition of machinery, equipment, furniture fixtures, standalone computers, including software, and leasehold improvements retaining 423 full-time permanent positions and creating 75 new full-time permanent positions. If there are no comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 1988-2014 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a Columbus downtown office incentive agreement with Eloque Design Inc. as provided in Columbus City Council Resolution 0088X-2007 adopted June 4, 2007. I want to share a little bit about Eloque Design Inc., which is an independently owned e-commerce company based in Columbus, Ohio and in New York City. They design and sell contemporary apparel for women sizes 14 and 24, catering to a fashion-savvy consumer, shopping for trend-right styles just right from the runway, and they currently ship to U.S. and Canada. Eloque Design is proposing to relocate their operations from 4449 Eastern Way, Columbus, Ohio, and lease renovate and equip approximately 4,000 square feet of existing office space located at 2 Miranova Place. The company will invest approximately $60,000 towards leasehold improvements in an amount to be determined related to their furniture acquisition, retaining and relocating six full-time positions and creating approximately 40 full-time permanent positions with an associated annual payroll of approximately $4.5 million. If there are no comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 2053-2014 to amend the 2014 capital improvements budget to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to make financial assistance available as grants to home buyers, renters, for-profit, nonprofit organizations to increase the local supply of decent, safe, and sanitary housing and decrease the number of vacant properties in our neighborhoods, to authorize expenditure of $2,152,775 from the 2014 Housing Preservation Fund and to declare an emergency. I believe I have two speakers on this ordinance, beginning with Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, if you'll please approach the podium, share your first and last name. You have three minutes to speak in regards to ordinance 2053, of which you have stated you are for.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of Solider Vacant Amendment, property in North London area. I'm just kind of concerned with the vacant property all over of Columbus, Ohio here. Also, we have historical property that has sit for years and years to come. And just to remind you, 1490 of Genesee Avenue. I have walked this block from time to time, and it still sits like this year after year. And these homes can be turned around for people to move back into these communities. What I don't want to see is vacant homes that still sit in really good condition can be rehabbed and be put back to people moving back into the neighborhood. Now, I'm also for lap-dated homes and burnt structures can be torn down as quickly, something like this a couple of years ago. And also, you know, I just don't see enough is being done in this particular area. So again, I'd just would like to see more done to moving these properties right along. And so again, thank you for your time.
Mr. Wilkins, as always, I want to thank you for coming down with a passion for your neighborhood and share with you that as you talk with us about renovation and demolition, that we do all our efforts to save homes when appropriate. And I want to let you know that your addresses that you give us specifically, we follow up on and want to continue to work with you, and I look forward to walking the neighborhood with you in two weeks. I believe we have a scheduled time to spend in your neighborhood. So thank you for coming down. Our next speaker this evening is Mr. Quojo Abibio. I think I'm going to get that right. Mr. Abibio, if you'll please approach the podium and state your first and last name, your address, any organizations you represent. I believe you have stated that you are for ordinance 2053-2014.
Good evening, President Ginther, council members. I'm with the North London Area Commission. I want to thank you personally, Michelle, for your leadership in finding these funds to help renovate abandoned houses in our community. We know it's a huge problem, and they're saying you're finding pockets of money all over the place. So I hope that the boundaries in terms of where these dollars will go will assist us in North London, and I'm just wondering, are we part of that zone? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. But I mean, it's not, that's basically all I have. I'm just wondering if we're part of those boundaries where these dollars would go in the development of these abandoned properties.
So to answer your question, the home repair program does have some extension into North London to answer your question.
Absolutely.
And trying to cover both. I just want to make sure that I did not interrupt you from finishing your comments.
No, that's fine.
Okay. So yes, the boundary does include part of the neighborhood which you represent, and I again appreciate you as well as Mr. Wilkins in sharing your comments about North London. We appreciate you being here and present, and we continue to engage in how those dollars are spent to make sure that everyone has an opportunity. I've met with several of the leaders in North London and South London to talk about the needs in London holistically, so we don't have a divide of South and North London, but to look at the area more holistically. Deputy Director Brandon, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
Thank you, Chairman Mills. I don't have any additional comments other than to just confirm what you said, that the funds are available for use citywide, and while specific projects haven't been identified, they are citywide eligible.
I think it's a wonderful project, and we thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other additional comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have the Environment Committee, and President Pro Tem Miller, I believe, is bringing forth legislation from the Environment Committee this evening.
Yes, President Ginther. In the Environment Committee, we have one item, is 1889-2014, to authorize the Director of Public Service to establish a purchase order with the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio for landfill use by the Division of Infrastructure Management, to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 or so much thereof as may be needed for the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund, and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the city code and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to request for approval with a voice vote.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills. Paley.
Yes.
Tyson. President Ginther.
And that is all we have tonight in Environment Committee.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. We do have one more piece of business before we take non-agenda speakers and adjourn our regular business this evening. I'd like to offer from the floor Resolution 0164X-2014 to honor, recognize, and express our gratitude to Council President Pro Tem, A. Troy Miller, for his service to the residents of Columbus as a member of Columbus City Council. Move for adoption?
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein Miller, Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Resolution adopted. Since he joined council in 2009, President Pro Tem Miller has been a force for transparency and efficiency in city government. Among his many accomplishments was the development of the Legislative Center, a web resource that allows the public easy access to city council agendas, legislation, and documents. He also introduced the legislation that created the My Columbus mobile app, which enables residents and visitors to access information about Columbus and submit service requests on their mobile devices. Pro Tem Miller helped lead the Small Business Roundtable, a working group convened by council to help the city do a better job supporting small business. Councilmember Miller believes that Columbus can and should be the best place in the nation for entrepreneurs to make their dreams come true. That vision has guided his efforts as a member of this body, and just as recently as last week, I received a text message of thanks from Brian Thornton, owner of OH Burger and OH Chips, and the position you created in working with Director Messer, our small business concierge. Mr. Thornton was singing his praises and helping him get in business and sell goods here in Columbus. Councilmember Miller worked with community partners to create the Kickstart Columbus Competitions, which helped local entrepreneurs get their innovative products and services to market. In fact, this week, the Kickstart Columbus Retail Competition will award prime downtown storefront space and other prizes to the contestant with the best retail business plan. While Councilmember Miller's Shark Meat Contest will give local innovators the chance to pitch their business ideas to potential investors and a panel of expert judges. Pro Tem Miller has also guided our zoning committee for several years, not an enviable task in that role that he's made it his mission to make the zoning process more transparent and understandable to the public. He's delivered his Zoning 101 presentation in numerous public forums in order to engage residents in the zoning process. Pro Tem Miller's legacy will be one of sincere, pragmatic, and effective service to the residents of Columbus. The members of Columbus City Council who served with him will always be grateful for the calm, thoughtful nature that he has brought to our deliberations on issues of great importance to Columbus residents. We will miss you, Troy, but we wish you the very best as you move on and move forward with all that lays ahead of you. But I and this caucus wanted to recognize you on behalf of the people of Columbus. Any comments from council members? Councilmember Paley?
He's telling me to be short. I will, because there's just too many words to say how much I appreciate working with you and how much I'm going to miss you in the future. Don't think I'm not going to get a hold of you. Good luck in the future.
Councilmember Craig?
Troy, let me thank you for the privilege and honor of working with you. I think it summed up well. I think your calm demeanor, your thoughtfulness, these are serious issues with council, and we take our jobs extremely seriously and the work that we do for the residents of the city of Columbus, not to be for self-engrandizement, but really to move families and children forward. I think the interest around small business is one that I appreciate greatly. Many of the residents of Columbus work and serve in our small businesses and help to provide quality of life. Thank you for your leadership, certainly in that area, and promulgating our city in a way that we can all be proud. God bless you. We wish you well.
Councilmember Mills?
I want to say thank you for your calm. You've always helped me with that, and I appreciate that and just a model for calmness, and I want to thank you for your work on the commission, the commission on commissions. I think making access and information accessible to people really made a difference in how commissions operate, and I know that that will last a long time with the commission. So thank you for your work with them and all the other work that you've done in your years of service. So thank you.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you. Councilmember Mills, I've known you a long time and just want to say thank you for being a part of this council, but especially your work around small businesses. That's where people's dreams come true, and you have certainly moved our city forward in such an amazing way to be able to help small businesses to move forward. I know that small businesses employ lots of individuals that certainly maybe others would not hire and for different reasons, and so I just really appreciate the work around the small businesses. And also, and lastly, just your work around technology. I think the resolution stated all the work that you've done to move our city forward. Just want to say thank you so very much for your service to our city, and you will be missed.
Councilmember Klein?
Thank you, Council President Troy. You've been a very good friend and desk mate, and I've appreciated from day one when I first joined council, the opportunity to sit next to you and learn from you and to be able to bounce ideas off you. So our friendship will transcend city hall, hopefully, as you embark on the next endeavor and chapters in your life, and I wish you the best.
On behalf of Columbus City Council and the people of Columbus, thanks for your service.
Well, I've actually saved all my thank yous in a document that's 50 pages, so, but I'm going to be consistent to myself and keep this very short. I'd like to thank my council members. They've been a pleasure to work with these number of years, with me able to travel and see other cities. Columbus is a great city. We deal with a lot of important issues, but I think the city, the administration, the mayor, council members, the cabinet, the staff, the directors, they really care for the Columbus residents. And I've seen in other cities that I go to, if I'm in a hotel room, I sneak and look at their council meetings, and they have a rough job of just getting the community together to approve the well-being of their neighbors. Columbus is different, and I think that we see that on a daily basis by, we hear comments from speakers, but we actually follow up and get things done with them. So the combination with a great city council, a great mayor, a great directors, Columbus is not dealing with certain other issues other cities are dealing with. And I think that what we have to continue to do is just make sure that we continue our culture of just working together and also covering each other's back and caring for one another. And that's just one of the things that's been a pleasure, and it's going to be really tough to leave Columbus because of that. And I'd like to thank everyone. I don't want to give too many names because I don't want to miss anyone, but of course I have to name my staff, Jeanette Hawkins and Alfreda King. Go ahead, stand up. Of course, they did most of the work. So I'm just going to leave it at that and say that I'm going to miss Columbus, even though I'm headed out west. I do have close relationships right back here in Columbus, so thank you again.
And we have a new friend to visit if anything like last winter comes back this winter, because it's sunnier and warmer. Best of luck to you. Nothing else to come before council this evening? Councilmember Mills?
I'm sorry, I have one announcement. As the Chair of Education, I try to share great highlights from our local students. As the Chair of Education, I try to share great highlights from our local students. And tonight, I want to recognize Centennial High School student Elijah McKnight, who will be participating in the American Graduate Day broadcast on Public Broadcasting System Network, PBS. And the show will broadcast on September twenty-seventh. American Graduate Day is a day-long live national multi-platform broadcast focusing on individuals and organizations working to keep students on the path to graduation. McKnight will talk about his work with the Summer Brain Gain Program and anybody who knows me, I truly believe summer matters. And the program is designed, the Summer Brain Gain Program is designed to prevent the summer slide and help close the achievement gap that's caused during the summer, at a period of time when students are not in the classroom and education gains are made during the school year sort of regress and we want to avoid that. So please tune in and watch Elijah McKnight represent the city of Columbus as well as his school, Centennial High School, and all the students of Columbus City Schools. The Summer Brain Gain Program is absolutely what we need to continue the progress of our students so they can matriculate and graduate from high school. So good luck on the broadcast, Mr. McKnight and his family and parents for their support of, of him and looking forward to him representing us well Thursday night.
Anything else to come before council this evening? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. We do have three non-agenda speakers that will take momentarily.